We will call this meeting to order. The Board of Commissioners be for November the 19th. And we bow your heads while we have the motion. I do have my Father, we come to you in the season of Thanksgiving, to give you thanks for all the blessings that you bestowed upon us and the residents of this county. And Lord, we know that there are many more blessings to come. Lord, we pray that you will provide a hedge of protection for our first responders and our residents of Harris County. And also, Lord, we ask that you provide this board with the knowledge that we need to make the right decisions for this county. Lord, we ask all these things in Jesus' name, amen. And if you stand for the floor.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda tonight is the minutes for the regular session of November 15. Do we have a motion? And there's a motion to approve, there's a second. There's a motion and a second. Are there any changes or any discussion? All those in favor of approval of minutes, please raise your hand. Five minutes on the floor. The next item on our agenda is under new business. And it's the moratorium on the PRD, the extension. The board approved a 90-day moratorium on planned residential developments, PRD, on September the 3rd, 2019, which will expire on December the 3rd, 2019. And an extension of the moratorium is necessary to give more time to review and possibly revise the ordinance and the regulations regarding such developments. The county will soon be undertaking the rewrite revision of the zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and other land use related ordinances to be completed by or before the end of December 2020. Therefore, because the PRD is part of the zoning ordinance, it is suggested that the moratorium be extended to the completion of the rewrite and the revisions or December the 31st, 2020, whichever occurs first. Is there a motion? There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion or questions?
The only just thing I have to say against a discussion is that we are not just kicking this down the road. We're actually saying, we're going to wait until we get better information from the zoning ordinance company that we're going to hire. Because I don't want to just push this down the road where we look like we're not doing anything. We're waiting to get information, better information, to help us make better decisions by waiting on this zoning ordinance. I'm okay with it, but I don't want it to seem like we're just pushing it down the road. I don't know if I stated that properly.
I have a point, and that's it's not what we're trying to do. But in the context of redoing all of those things, it has to be a cohesive process. So instead of just trying to piece meal it, and maybe then have a good way to change it or something. This allows us the opportunity to have it all fit together.
See, I think that'd be a good idea, because I'm sure these people know more about it than I do.
I have a couple of comments that I'd like to make. I have an aversion to voting on something that we have not discussed as a full board. We've had 90 days to discuss the PRD, and we have not done that. It is on our agenda for our retreat tomorrow to discuss the PRD. I have no idea what the other commissioners think about the PRD. I would like to have that discussion first, and I would like to table this until the December 3rd, man.
The problem with that, Madam Chairman, is that the 90-day extension runs out on December 3rd.
I'm aware of that.
And we need to take the vote on this before that day.
Before midnight. It's at midnight on December 3rd. And we have our meeting on that day. Our meeting is that day. December 3rd.
Is it the 3rd?
Uh huh. Yes, it is. So, and I have no problem with taking a vote on that day. But it is on December 3rd. And I think that we need to talk about this. This is an issue that is extremely important to our community. And I don't have an idea of what we want to see. And I've been saying that for several years, that we need to decide what we want to look like in Harris County. And I would just like to see some discussion with the full board before we go to win. Got that answer, Ms. Mayor, okay. The next item on the agenda are the financial statements for August and September. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve both.
Motion to approve both. Is there a second? There is a motion and a second to approve both the August and September financial statements. Is there any discussion, plans here, answers, or any questions? No questions, no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you. And this motion is approved. The next item on the agenda are requests for tax refund. There are two. One is for Mr. Arnold Chill, 34 Wadham Drive in Ellersley, and the amount of $614.80, which is the adverb of tax. The reason is he sold his motor home prior to his birthday and prior to affixing the 2020 sticker. The Tax Commissioner agrees. The Board of Tax Assessors agrees with the Tax Commissioner. The second is for Gerald Stinson, 952 Dale Lake Drive in Midland. The amount is $38.25, which is the adverb of tax. The reason is he traded his vehicle before the tax was due. The Tax Commissioner agrees, and the Board of Tax Assessors agree. And do you want to handle both of these together, or?
Together.
Yep, together. If that's okay with you.
I believe we grant both of these tax refund requests. The ones for Arnold Chill and Gerald Stinson.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion or any questions? All those in favor? Motion is approved. Okay, Mr. County Manager, Mr. Allen.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, the next item is Airport Capital Improvement Plan. As Caitlin from POG comes up and sets up the five-year plan documents, let me preface the remarks a little. The county's airport is governed by GDOT requirements and regulations. And every year, we are to, each airport in the county, each airport in the state, including Harris County Airport, is to come up with a five-year capital improvement plan of what it's going to do in the next future five years. So POG and Company are consultants, along with staff and the Airport Committee, has looked at these items to complete within the next five years, how they will be funded. And POG and Company, the consultants, have whipped up a nice five-year plan. Now, the Airport Committee has reviewed the documents at several meetings, and they're recommending that the board approve the five-year plan for submission to GDOT, as we do every year. So Caitlin is here with POG to present the five-year CIP as being recommended by the Airport Committee, and respond to any questions or comments the board may have. And after tonight, then it needs to be submitted by the deadline of November 22nd. So Caitlin.
I have with me Andrew Swift. She's going to talk over about the public safety.
Yeah, so first off, the County's plan is to lay out your future projects for this facility. Before we get into the detail, I want to take a step back from what we did previously. Previously, we had constructed a hangar that has a current debt that we're carrying. So a lot of the early years are geared towards getting rid of that debt. So the first couple of years of your capital improvement plan, that's your priority and goal. And then the future goal is, all these jobs are geared towards the end of your capital improvement plan, which lays out all of your projects to get to that step. This is what Caitlin's got.
So like you just said, the first five years on our capital improvement plan, the end goal of those is to get to our runway extension project that's on your master plan. So the carrying currently amounts of almost $500,000 a year. So next year, we have nothing planned to, so that you can use your non-clinary entitlement funding to pay down some of this debt that you're carrying. Fiscal year 2020, we've got just a runway length justification study valued at $13,500. Ending good results on this study. The following year, we're looking at a runway strength analysis study, which is just going to give you a baseline of the current strength of your runway pavement. 2021, we're looking at, 22, we're looking at the environmental assessment for this runway extension project. Again, this is all pending good results on your initial, the previous studies prior to this year. 2023, you're looking at Nelson Road, the relocation and utility coordination. Nelson Road is 2D west of Runway 9. That's where the, that's the end of the runway that we're looking at extending. So we have to talk about, this would just be precursor to the runway extension project. We have to move some of the utilities and that road. Additionally, you've got to look at an aeronautical study associated with this runway extension, valued at about $55,000. Following year, you're 2024, looking at the design of the runway extension and rehabilitation of your runway pavement. Additionally, runway lighting replacement and your real, your runway end indicator lights. And that's approximately a $90,000 cost. And then your out-years, we've got construction of this runway extension. And additionally, the Airport Committee has talked about other projects they're interested in, like the terminal building expansion. They talked about wanting to maybe construction of the hangers. So we've got those planned in your out-years. But again, none of these projects are set in stone. If something comes up in the meantime that is an immediate need for the airport, that would obviously be readjusted. And your CIP, again, this is submitted yearly. This is just for planning purposes for GDOT. It's not allocating anybody or anything.
For the equity projects, the funding is broken down amongst three sources. 90% comes from the FAA, 5% comes from the state, and then 5% is shipped into other projects.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to hear any questions? Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Now, with the questions or discussion? All those in favor? And the motion carries.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, item number six, resolution to authorize to accept GDOT funds for the airport. As previously said by POG Company, the county has, in the previous years, built hangers and taxiways. And the county did fund a lot of those improvements. And GDOT was supposed to reimburse us several years ago. But again, it's by, you know, as money becomes available from the state. So luckily, excess funds are available from GDOT from fiscal year 2015. And our GDOT field representative, Lou Walker, is coming up now to give us good news that he loves Harris County Airport so much. He's going to give us a lot of that reimbursement money from previous years. Lou, did I balk it too much?
You did. Hi, Lou Walker, GDOT. First, I wanted to say that the department appreciates what Harris County has done at the airport over the past several years. And by taking on that debt, you took, you built a lot of stuff out there waiting for us to help you. And I know that most of you understand that your airport, you get every year an entitlement grant. It's $150,000 of federal monies. And this year, your entitlement grant for FY '20 was to reimburse you for a portion of the taxiway and hangar development, the site work. And GDOT, we, as a block grant state with the FAA, we basically administer the FAA's money for the airports of the state of Georgia. And we were closing out our FY '15 year. And there's available monies that other airports were unable to spend during the four-year period. And I'll be honest with you, rather than sending it back through the FAA, back to Washington, to be dispersed, who knows where. We normally try to reimburse airports who have taken on projects during the course of the time. So this year, we're going to, available FY '15 monies, there's an additional $300, almost $350,000. So your total reimbursement for, if you accept the grant, is $451,000. Which equates to 90% of $501,000 of that project. And if you guys will vote to accept, I'll go back, tell my folks, they want their money. And we'll get the electronic contract started and send back to you, Ms. Langston.
Okay. Well, I certainly don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth. You explained what I was going to ask you about. How did you know this money was achieving its purpose?
Well, it wasn't me.
Well, I know it wasn't you, but you did it.
And we do this, this is basically how we reimburse, is from when we close out a grant year to airports that have done work, they're funding themselves. And it takes a while. I don't know when the next round will come for you guys. But as long as I'm still working, which, who knows how long that's going to be. I will keep saying, remember my buddy Randy and the folks down at Harris County?
Well, thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you, this is. Is there a motion to accept?
I'm moved to make a second.
Yeah, me too. Maybe two, there may be five motions to accept. Is there a second?
Oh, I see.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? All right, motion is approved.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, number seven, bid award for vehicle scales at Solid Waste Department. Funds were allocated in the current year's budget, in the Solid Waste fund's budget, in particular, to purchase replacement drive-over scales at the Solid Waste Transport Station. The current drive-over scales are old, have a lot of maintenance issues, and the 30 feet by 11 feet weight area is too short for current trucks to be properly weighed. They have to go and teeter totter on each of the scales to get an accurate representation. So I guess trucks are getting bigger. So bids were prepared, distributed, and advertised. And on the deadline date of November 8th, one bid was received from Scale Systems Columbus at $101,231. The sole bid from Scale Systems is below the budget amount of $115,000. So it's about almost $35, $3700 in the budget. The bid amount will cover tearing out the old equipment, installing the new equipment, and having periodic performance checks. The new scale will have a weight area of 70 feet by 11 to capture all the huge trucks that are coming in there so they can be weighed properly. The system will have a lightning protection system, which we have a problem with now. The current system is getting hit by lightning a lot, knocking out the system, and we're down for a couple of hours. It will have 100 tons of weight capacity and can generate computerized managerial reports. If approved, the project can be completed by mid-February of next year. This would be a great asset to the Solid Waste Department to replace the old scales with new and much larger ones.
Is there a motion?
I made a motion that we approve Scale Systems Columbus store for $111,231.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll see.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any questions or any discussion?
I have one question. Only because I just don't know. When we're tearing out the old scales and we're trying to put in the new scales, what are we going to use? Or are we going to use anything, or have we thought that far ahead?
Well, I know, there's a, hopefully it won't take that long, maybe over the weekend, while we're maybe not in, maybe, it'll be after the holidays, I can tell you. Because that's our business time. Maybe on a, we'll time it so it's maybe on the weekend, so it can be torn out quickly and put back very quickly. Maybe using temper scales.
Because I know that, you know, we're fixing to hit the holiday months, and you're going to have a lot of people that are taking off, and that's when they're going to be hauling stuff, that's why.
Yeah, this we've done after the holidays, because that's the truck station's business time.
Right. That's what made me think about what would we do when we got this one out. Okay, I was just curious.
Excuse me, any other questions? There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve, all those in favor? Motion is approved.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, next one is bid award for garbage truck for Solid Waste. Again, funds were allocated in the current year's budget to purchase a replacement garbage truck for the Solid Waste Department. Bids were prepared, distributed, and advertised. And on the deadline date of November 7th, four bids were received. The low bid did not meet specifications. Therefore, staff is recommending the bid be awarded to the next low bid, which is Peterbilt of Atlanta, in the amount of $203,351, with a delivery time of 300 calendar days, or about September 2020, which is during next year's budget year. Both the Solid Waste Director and the Fleet Manager have reviewed the submitted specification, and they are both in agreement that the submitted bid will be the appropriate truck for the county. It's a big 25 cubic yard vehicle that the county needs as a replacement. Since the garbage truck will not be delivered and paid for until next budget year, the approved bid amount will be included in next year's budget. So this, again, this will be a replacement garbage truck to replace a much older one. We're shocked that it's 300 days for delivery.
Shocked like that isn't bad, or shocked like isn't good?
Yeah, it takes that long.
It takes that long to build a garbage truck. They're all custom-made.
Last one took less than 200 days.
Yeah. And this is a big, a 25 cubic yards, probably one of the biggest trucks, the garbage trucks we have. They're all custom-made, they're all built to order. It's like buying jewelry. It's just expensive. And time-consuming. So we're going to put it in next year's budget, the exact amount. And there it is.
Is there a motion?
A motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second? Is there a second? Any other questions or discussion?
I see that we were awarding this to Peterbilt of Atlanta, but isn't that the same company that gave it a bid that didn't meet specifications? They could put in two bids?
Yes.
And I was just wondering, why was it two if it wasn't?
Yeah, various companies, they have various product lines and various body styles. So they might use a cab, but a different chassis, and vice versa. So, but we're getting a 2019 Peterbilt 348, which is the compacter body of New Way Cobra. That means something to the Solid Waste Director and the Fleet Manager versus a PAC 5000 and a DuraPAC 5000.
That doesn't meet specs.
Right, so.
Okay.
Okay. There is a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor? Motion is approved.
Madam Chairman, Board Commissioners, next item is another bid award for water line materials for Hadley Road. The board included the current year's budget and this 2014 fund in particular, $200,000 to purchase water line equipment and materials, including fire hydrants for Hadley Road water improvements. From Hope World Church Road to Sunnyside Road, a distance of about 11,000 feet. Again, bid documents were prepared, distributed, and advertised. And on the deadline date of November 12th, three bids were received. The low bid, Ferguson Water Works from Columbus, was $66,999.96. So the low bidder, Ferguson Water Works, when they submit a low bid with all delivery of all materials by the bid January of next year. But this bid amount is only for half of the total project cost since Water Works employees crew, which are installing this themselves. So they're going to do half in the winter and half next summer. So therefore, the bid amount is for half of the project cost from Hope World Church Road to about 6,500 feet northwest. And construction will be conducted by in-house Water Works crews during the winter of 2020. The other half will be continued to Sunnyside Road and conducted during the summer of 2020. So eventually, it's one big project. Jeff wants to, the Water Works Director wants to cut it in half, half now, half later, so his crews won't be overwhelmed. Because they're also putting in all the water meter equipment, too. So that's the project for the board to consider.
Do you think if we bought all the material at one time, we could get a better price per foot of material, rather than buying half of it? Now, do we not have any of our stored materials? Instead of having, we bought it, we balked it, saving money.
That's just how the Water Works Director wanted to handle it.
Well, it's actually not half. I mean, I know I was educated here in the county, but 6,500 is over half of 11,000.
Approximately half.
I would just say, you know, so that you're actually going to do more than half and then less than half the second phase.
Is there a motion? A motion to approve, is there a second?
I'll see.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? There is a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor? Motion is approved.
The next item is project updates. To quickly go over the project updates. Number two, replacement countywide email system. That is being done. Training is tomorrow for most people on the training, to be trained tomorrow at the community center. And that should be, that project should be finished early of next month. So that's the email system installation and training.
How many emails is that?
As many as we need.
I know that was the problem we had with the old system, we ran out of emails.
The old system was a free system set up many years ago, and had a limited number of emails. I think it was 100. And so we were limited to 100, and we reached that several years ago. So this new system is unlimited. So that will be done by early next month. Again, the high points, number 10, the fuel card replacement. We met with WEX representatives, the new WEX cards, the new WEX fuel card management system is being implemented, and the new cards should be here by the end of the month to be distributed to all the vehicles. So that is getting done. And implementation will be done by mid-December. Number 18, the community center's pool equipment. Again, the Duffield Aquatics was given that bid of $23,317.94, completion by late December. The equipment has been ordered, waiting for delivery. In the meantime, the heater. In the meantime, the heater broke down. So now we got our replacement heater on the way. And a temporary heater has been installed and the community center should be open tomorrow.
Okay, that will be an additional $15,000 or so dollars.
The rental of the equipment will be about $5,000.
It's half as much as the actual dollar.
Because that's old equipment, you know, temporary that they had, that they had laying around. The new, the new $500,000 BTU heater should be right about $11,000 for installation.
Is that not a budget, your budget, or you've been geared to using SPOST? Or how have you been funding that?
We're still talking about that. We, we're debating on, is a SPOST eligible? Since we came in under on the other part, we're still debating that issue.
What kind of warranty are we going to get on this new heater? Because aren't they supposed to last a little bit longer than this?
They're supposed to last about, you know, 12 to 15 years. This one got eight years. The reason why was it was never covered from the elements. So water leaked in for seven years and it simply rusted out. All the components rusted, the interior rusted, all the cable connections rusted. But it's been covered for about a year and a half now. But if it was covered the first seven years, we probably would be having this discussion. So, so basically, so now, I would say by middle of January, we'll have a brand-new pool equipment. The UV system we have a half about five years. All kind of control panels, pumps, and a new heater. So that community center's pool should be new again. Should be new again. And more reliable. Number 21, the Elgin Park Lodge, paid for by insurance proceeds. MLC contract should start that pretty soon and be done by late December. Number 22, Chippewa grinding of all the storms and braid Elgin Park. Victory Grind has moved back in this week and their grinder should start operating probably tomorrow, beginning tomorrow or Thursday, to grind up the balance of its 27,500, 27,500 cubic yards of material. And that will clean up the park a little bit more. Number 24, the soccer club pavilion is coming along very nicely. That should be, be completed by the end of the year. Signing is going out today and tomorrow and yesterday. Rails for Trails, number 26. Phase one is completed except for the regulatory signs. They are, they're not up yet. They should be done by the 25th. All the regulatory signs should be up on the 25th. The regulatory ceremony is tomorrow at 4 o'clock. So we should be using Phase One pretty soon. From Pine Mountain, from US 27 Chipley to US 27 County Road 354. And Phases Two and Three are also under construction. They started out a week and a half ago. And that should be finished by early 2020. All funded by federal grants and SPOST funds. Number 28, fence project for the airport. That project has just been completed and a pencil has been submitted, a small pencil has been submitted to the fencing contractor. Number 31, drive-over scales at Solid Waste was approved tonight. Number 32, garbage truck replacement was approved tonight. Number 33, the inmate transport van for Solid Waste. That transport van has been delivered yesterday. Number 35, half of Hadley Road was approved tonight, or approaching half of Hadley Road was approved tonight. Number 38, water line on State Route 315 to serve Melbury Grove. That bid opening was on November 14th and board consideration next meeting December 3rd. Number 40, update of county's land needs and development codes. An RFQ was advertised. Three proposals were received and are being evaluated right now. And hopefully, if everything goes right, the board consideration of that contract at next meeting December 3rd. Number 41, Mellet Lake Dam, still waiting for this day. No response from this day. Number 47, begin the employee compensation study using the Carl Vinson Institute of Government. That project will begin February 2020. Number 48, continue the diesel site preparation work. That work restarted about a week and a half ago. Should be finished by early to mid-January of next year. And that's about the highlights of the various projects that county is going on. We have to answer any questions before we go.
Where are we at with the purchase of the roll-off containers? I know that that should be sometime around in November.
Right. There are delivery that we haven't gotten yet. That should be here soon.
Any other questions? Next on our agenda is our county attorney.
Yes, ma'am. I have two items. One is modification of the GFA loan for the installation of water heaters. There are a number of documents that, pages for you to look at. But basically, what this does is modifies the original agreement and resolution, which was entered into February 2018 to replace water meters throughout the county. And what this will do is, is good news, is that, that you're modifying the agreement and at the end of the project, GFA is going, the project principal forgiveness is going to go from $362,000 up to $300, $434,000 or up $72,000. And the project schedule has been extended to September 1st. So by agreeing to accept this, your reimbursement back or the forgiveness off the, the amount that was originally set out, which was $100,000 some thousand dollars. The, you will be getting $72,000 more off of it than from GFA than you would otherwise. The original amount was $1,812,000. So you'll get that, that you will give the SPOST. So I recommend that to you, to execute those documents and put that in place.
Okay, that much better. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve modification agreement and resolution and authorize the chairman to execute the documents and county clerk to attest them.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. Any other questions for Mr. Taylor? No questions.
The second item.
Wait, we need to do both.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
All those in favor? Motion is approved. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. The next item on the agenda is for you to approve and be subject to the town of Pine Mountain approving the agreement. And the, it was, they prepared a memorandum of understanding and, you know, I changed it, took it, looked at it, and it should be an intergovernmental agreement. I sent it down to their attorney and looked at it and it was for them to look at it and it just haven't gotten back with me. But it, it's not going to be, not going to be many changes, I wouldn't think. I would say that they, they would have any real problems with the changes that I sent down. But what Pine Mountain is agreeing to do is to accept the responsibilities for the law enforcement and public safety activities on the part of the trail, Rails for Trails within town limits of the town of Pine Mountain. And they will enforce the ordinance in their, within the limits of Pine Mountain to include without limitation the uses of any motorized vehicle on the, on the trail, any hoofed animals, under strain dogs, firearms, or alcohol, tobacco products as provided in your order. Basically, what they're going to do will enforce the county's ordinance within the town limits of Pine Mountain. And they agree to maintain the grass and any other plantings that are there and to improve the right-of-way on either side of the Rails for Trails and either at their own expense or in conjunction with the county. They agree to be responsible for the collection, disposal of any waste materials that are there. I assume there are going to be some trash, trash cans and whatnot along the line, along there for the users of the trail to dispose of water bottles and whatnot. And one thing that I added to this is that, is item number six, is that the, you are reserving the sole right to make any, any new crossings or driveways across the trail within the town of Pine Mountain. And that will be left to you as opposed to the city council of Pine Mountain. But the, but the county is to be responsible for maintaining the surface of the Rails for Trails. This is an intergovernmental agreement and under the Georgia Constitution and the agreements between governmental entities and municipalities and counties are authorized and can be last about 50 years. But this one becomes effective on December 1, 2019 and will continue from year to year unless determined by either party with 60-day notice. But it won't exceed 50 years. So, you know, you can terminate if things don't work out or you have some other reasons to do it. You just give the other party 60-day's notice and it'll be over. So this, this will relieve. And then any citation for violation, I would go to the municipal court in Pine Mountain, where the folks are coming, coming here and finding the revenue or money that comes off of the citation codes at Pine Mountain.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there a motion?
And I would approve it subject to the town of Pine Mountain approval.
This is just the trail within the city limits of Pine Mountain?
Yes, sir.
Remind me where the city limits of Pine Mountain goes to. Isn't it all the way past Talway?
Except Mount Creek Inn, right around, just past there.
Mount Creek Inn?
Mm-hmm. Because there's a sign right before you get to Mount Creek Inn.
So it's actually the whole trail that we have under construction?
Yes.
All the things one, and two, and three?
All the things two and three.
Okay, sir, motion? All right, there's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any other questions?
This, this is, this is something I thought of. Didn't the town, didn't City of Hamilton Annex?
Yes.
The part of the bar, the restaurant and bar down there?
Yes, that's right.
Going down the?
Railroad, that's right.
Down the railroad?
Yep. It's, what was used to be the Vineyard Green, but now it's?
218.
Yeah.
It's going to be kind of a head scratcher, you know.
Yeah, that's a long.
And I guess that's still part of the town of Pine Mountain, I mean, Hamilton. So we'll, we'll work out something on that.
Okay.
All right.
But you're right about that. Okay, there is a motion to approve. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion is approved.
Madam Chairman, that's all I have on this. There's need to go to the executive.
There's a need for us to go to the executive session for purpose of discussing personnel with the county manager and real estate.
The Division Real Property.
Okay, with the county manager and the division. Motion to go into the executive session. Is there a second? Motion is second.